Good morning. We have eight members present. We still need two for a quorum, but because we are going to have a whole agenda today in addition to presentations and we will very likely have to go into closed session at some point during the meeting, I'm going to start the presentations now and begin by recognizing Mr. Ridley Thomas for a presentation.
Madam President, Members of the Council, if I can get your attention, I think you will be pleased to...
Mr. Ridley Thomas, hold on one second. We now have ten. We're just going to call the roll and then we'll call on you and it'll all be official. Call the roll, please.
Bernsen, Sheik, Fergal, Andrew Gober, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Kowski, Pajekova, Dean, Ridley Thomas, Swornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present in the quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. That's just announced. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Friday, July 14th, Bastille Day. We meet three times a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. or thereabouts. We're available on Channel 35, the city's television station, also by council phone, and if you are a glutton for punishment, you can watch it all again at 7:30 tonight. The chair now recognizes Mr. Ridley Thomas for a presentation.
Thank you, Madam President, for that inimitable introduction. We are delighted today, Members of the Council, to have with us a very special guest, and therefore I am pleased to introduce to you Mrs. Doris Buffett Bryant. Just a little bit about her before she comes. Mrs. Bryant is the founder and president of what is affectionately known as the Sunshine Lady Foundation. This foundation is located in the community of Moorhead City in North Carolina. You will want to know that this is a private charity with a uniquely hands-on, folksy, person-to-person kind of enterprise dedicated to very, very serious purposes. The foundation does not accept grant requests directly from the public but depends largely on Mrs. Bryant's network of approximately 150 trusted friends and associates known to her as the Sun Beams. Through that network, Mrs. Bryant became aware of the work in Los Angeles to transform domestic violence from a woman's problem to a full-scale, citywide community issue. She has actually come here today to personally deliver, which was officially presented at ceremonies in North Carolina this past June. And I'm delighted today that she is with us to make this presentation. I want to say that I'm grateful to her for the journey that she has made on behalf of a very important mission to acknowledge the work that we are doing here in the city of Los Angeles. Now, if you would be kind enough to join me in welcoming our very special guest, Mrs. Doris Buffett Bryant. Ms. Bryant? I'm going to just take a moment and read this resolution because, as all of you have signed it, I'm sure you will appreciate that having noted that she is the founder of the Sunshine Lady Foundation and this foundation being dedicated to providing opportunities for the enhancement of education, well-being, and new life choices. They're all very excited that you're here, Doris. Right? Right. As I was saying, for the advancement of education, well-being, and new life choices for those who are deemed disadvantaged, with special empathy for working poor and families in crisis. You will want to know that this foundation was started in 1997 with a $10 million donation and a desire to help people whose problems didn't necessarily fit the agendas of larger, more traditional foundations. Mrs. Bryant established the Peace Award, known as the Sunshine Peace Award, which recognizes individuals who attempt to make a difference and to help build communities that are intolerant of domestic violence and through whose work those peoples' lives are changed and made better. It would seem to me that it's important for us to recognize that Mrs. Bryant has devoted her life to helping people and communities in need with the hope that someday they will pass the same brand of kindness along to others. She engages in these philanthropic activities with her husband, who could not be here today but is certainly one of those forces that helps to make all of that which the Sunshine Lady Foundation is about, he helps to make that happen. And so it is on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, Mrs. Bryant, and by adoption of this resolution, that we are pleased to commend you and the Sunshine Lady Foundation for the exemplary work you do to raise the standard of living and provide valuable opportunities for those in our society who are made better because of your kindness and contribution to their well-being.
Well, I want you all to know how very privileged and proud I am to be here today because you have in your midst one of the most outstanding leaders in our area of, we hope it's competence, but anyhow, our area of interest and passion, the domestic violence program. We had 117 nominations for this honor, and we picked out 15. Some we had to sort of dawdle over and think about, but your councilman stood out in the very first round. Our foundation is, yes, it's been described as a charmingly eccentric foundation. So we do things a little differently and we're very hands-on, and I enjoy it and I think it has more meaning for both the recipients and for us that way. We have a national scholarship program for women who are coming out of battering situations. We have 150 women that are enrolled in that from all over the country, and I just want you to know it's available. Our scholarship program is unique because we have 25% of our recipients are making a 3.8 to 40 average, which is astounding. They're highly motivated and they're changing their lives, and that's what we're all about, is changing people's lives. Now, I have something for the councilman. He was unable to come to Wilmington, so we came to him. Mohammed comes to the mountain, and the first item is a check for $10,000, and I want you to know that Mark did not take this for himself. That's really remarkable, and he has had us make it over to your own domestic violence group here in Los Angeles. So here it is, Mark.
Thank you very much.
And then we have a, we always figure when the money is spent, it's nice to have a little reminder of it. So here is something for you, and I don't think it's going to go on your table in that room that I saw, because I think your wife's going to nail it.
All right.
All right, and thanks to all of you, and I hope, I know you will keep up the good work. We're passionate about it, and you're passionate and brainy, and therefore, things will happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your help. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President, and the city's domestic violence task force is in full force. It is chaired by one of the premier advocates in this area of important work, Carol Adelkoff, and we would like for her to speak on behalf of the task force as she receives this donation, this contribution from the Sunshine Lady Foundation. Carol?
of this resolution that we are pleased to commend you and the Sunshine Lady Foundation for the exemplary work you do to raise the standard of living and provide valuable opportunities for those in our society who are made better because of your kindness and contribution to their well-being. I'd like to make some comments right now.
You're not gonna go too far away. Is that something for you? Well, I want you all to know how very privileged and proud I am to be here today because you have in your midst one of the most outstanding leaders in our area of, we hope it's competence, but anyhow, our area of interest and passion, the domestic violence program. We had 117 nominations for this honor and we picked out 15, some we had to sort of dawdle over and think about, but your councilman stood out in the very first round. Our foundation is, yes, it's been described as a charmingly eccentric foundation. So, we do things a little differently and we're very hands-on and I enjoy it and I think it has more meaning for both the recipients and for us that way. We have a national scholarship program for women who are coming out of battering situations. We have 150 women that are enrolled at that from all over the country and I just want you to know it's available. Our scholarship program is unique because we have 25% of our recipients are making a 3.8 to 4.0 average, which is astounding. They're highly motivated and they're changing their lives and that's what we're all about is changing people's lives. Now, I have something for the councilman. He was unable to come to Wilmington, so we came to him. Mohammed comes to the mountain and the first item is a check for $10,000. And I want you to know that Mark did not take this for himself. That's, you know, that's really remarkable and he has had us make it over to your own domestic violence group here in Los Angeles. So, here it is, Mark.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, it's what our best wishes. And then we have a, we always figure when the money's spent, it's nice to have a little reminder of it. So, here is something for you and I don't think it's gonna go on your table in that room that I saw because I think your wife's gonna nail it.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. And thanks to all of you and I hope you, I know you will keep up the good work. We're passionate about it and you're passionate and brainy and therefore, things will happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right here.
Thank you so much for your help. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. The city's Domestic Violence Task Force is in full force. It is chaired by one of the premier advocates in this area of important work, Carol Adelkoff. And we would like for her to speak on behalf of the task force as she receives this donation or this contribution from the Sunshine Lady Foundation. Carol?
Thank you. Well, I, my goodness, thank you so very, very, very much, Ms. Bryant and Councilman Ridley Thomas. The Domestic Violence Task Force views itself this moment, with all my advocates here with me, as quite rich. This more than doubles our financial capacity in our trust fund and we will do good work with it. We are so very, very grateful. The Domestic Violence Task Force is comprised of appointed experts from every council district of the city of Los Angeles, as well as from experts in the field and from every department of the city, including the police and the city attorney. We, as experts, well know that domestic violence is at the root of virtually every society problem that we see, certainly including the problems that we deal with here with gangs. We, as advocates, come often, as you know, to the council, asking for support. We ask for money for our programs. We ask you to help us set up and help us sustain life-saving programs throughout the city. In this, we earnestly believe that your support of these programs saves ultimately the lives of people by preventing future problems from happening and ultimately saves city dollars. This initiative by Mrs. Bryant is so unique to recognize the true leaders, the people who have truly stepped forth to make change. Councilman Ridley Thomas, in 1994, stepped forward with support of the entire council of the city of Los Angeles to effect this type of change. He established a regulation that would allow for annual funding for programs and the continuation of them. He also established our task force. We are so grateful to have this strong advocate with us here. And everybody behind me is a tiny, tiny, little representative of the whole community of victims and advocates that applaud both you, Councilman Ridley Thomas, with our congratulations and certainly you, Mrs. Bryant, for your excellent, excellent initiative. We thank you, we thank the city for the support of domestic violence programs.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Madam President. You may wish to know that Mrs. Bryant will appear on Good Morning America this coming Tuesday, July 18th, and once again will hold the banner high of the work that the city of Los Angeles is doing, is doing on this issue and what is going on in terms of the domestic violence fight throughout the land. There are programs on your desk that give further information about the awardees and the important work that continues to happen. Once again, on behalf of those who are struggling against this god-awful set of circumstances, the crime that it is, we thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Congratulations, everyone. And now our President Pro Tem, Acting Council President, Councilmember Galanter, has a presentation.
Where are, where's my commission on the status of women? There you are. Come on up. Thank you, Madam President. Continuing in somewhat the same theme, it's my great pleasure today to introduce some current and former members of, and staff members of the Commission on the Status of Women in celebration of the 25th anniversary of the existence of this very important commission here in the city of Los Angeles. And as I was looking over my notes for this presentation, I noticed it says, "The Commission has been recognized internationally as a leader in the fight against domestic violence." And there we were, doing it again. We are very proud of the, especially us women on the council, but all of us, I think, are very proud of the Commission on the Status of Women for their 25 years of advocacy and service. They don't just advocate, they also provide real service to women in the city. They respond to over 2,500 calls a year for emergency and non-emergency assistance. They've worked to help us improve gender balance in the police department, the fire department. They drafted the city's first sexual harassment policy and, as you know, this is unfortunately something we've debated a number of times over the years. They've helped us in improve it and figure out how to make sure that we are applying it well. They developed and implemented a procedure to assist female city employees whose job performance may be impacted by domestic violence. They published a number of helpful guides for women's services, the Red Book, a Directory of Women's Organizations, and the Women's Survival Guide for Victims of Domestic Violence. They produced the L.A. Woman Talk Show for our city cable channel, Channel 35. They even received an Emmy Award for their public service announcement on women and HIV and AIDS. We have a number of guests here today, two, at least one of whom will be very familiar to you all, who are, I'm going to introduce, I guess, let me present the resolution and then let's hear from all these people. And I, probably all of you want to accept this together. Come over this way, I'm not done yet. I want to present this to Julia Wu, who is the Commission President, and Paula Petrotta, the General Manager of the Los Angeles Commission on the Status of Women, and everybody else here as well, and all of the 2,500 people who call you every year because, really, all of you are a part of this same effort. And I think, I see councilmembers beginning to look like they want to say something, but let's, let's let our group go first. So, Julia and Paula, take that. Take that. I'm going to call first on Joy Picas, former member of the L.A. City Council.
It's a pleasure to be here again and particularly to celebrate an event as significant as the 25th anniversary of the Commission on the Status of Women. I wasn't quite here at its birth, but I was here during many early stormy years when it wasn't clear to everyone that having a Commission on the Status of Women was really important to the women of the city of Los Angeles. I'm glad it has survived, that it is a healthy, mature adult, that it continues to find important areas to move forward, to do some original work, and I know that it will continue to flourish and we will continue to cherish its existence. So, congratulations to the current commissioners, the past commissioners, and Paula, for your extraordinary leadership in, for the past many years.
Welcome back. Next, we're gonna hear, we're giving a little history lesson here while we're at it. Next, our next speaker is Sue Embry, who is a former member of the Commission and many of you know her from some of her other activities as well. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Good morning, members of the city council. It is a pleasure and an honor to be here this morning to congratulate the Commission on the Status of Women for their accomplishments during the past 25 years. When the Commission was first formed, the original members worked on social security, on equal pay for equal work, on non-traditional jobs for women, childcare, and domestic violence. Today, we have social security on the front burner during the presidential campaign and we still do not have equal pay for equal work. 25 years ago, it was 59 cents for a woman compared to a dollar for a man. Today, it is 74 cents for a woman to a dollar for a man. The total population of the United States is 272 million people. Of that, women constitute 139 million, whereas men constitute 133 million. More women vote than men, so I'm sure we have an opportunity to be able to elect good women to public office. Again, I would like to congratulate the Commission and wish them much luck in the future to face up to all the issues that we have discussed today. Thank you.
Now, you know, we often have occasion here to celebrate the first woman, one thing or another. I remember having a wonderful time with the first woman, everything in the police department, the first motorcycle officer and so on. Today, I want to introduce the first man commissioner on the Commission on the Status of Women, Andy Anderson.
Good morning. I would like to bring back to your memory, the memory of one of the great men of this state, Tom Bradley. Tom Bradley originated this commission. Tom and I went to the same high school. He was six or seven years ahead of me, but I remember his picture on the wall as a great hurdler. And he went through UCLA a number of years ahead of me. Then I became a pilot in the Air Force and I was, fought in a Battle of Britain and came back and went through UCLA. And Tom said to me one day, I was principal of a junior high school in inner-city, and Mark Ridley Thomas was a student there. One of the good students. We had a lot of violence in the city in those days. Mark Ridley Thomas never participated in that violence, but he was one of the leaders who helped to calm it. And I am so proud of what he has done. Congratulations, Mark. When Tom Bradley said to me, "Will you be the lone male member on the Commission on the Status of Women?" I said, "I'll be delighted to." I had a daughter who was a senior at the University of San Diego in the law school. She'd been sent out as one of the premier law students to work in a law firm and when she walked in, they said, "We're glad to see you. Where is the one we're interviewing?" Her name was Kim and they thought it was a man coming. She said, "I'm the law student." They said, "Oh, women can't do this work." She did the work very well. She became an employee of the law firm and she now has her own law firm. And she was one of the reasons that I said yes to Tom Bradley. I'd be happy to work on this commission. It has done a marvelous job and you, council, have done a marvelous job of supporting it. And thank you for inviting us here today. It's good to see some of my old friends on the council again. Bye.
And now, a former Commissioner, Nina Sorkin.
Good morning. I had the opportunity to be a Commissioner from 1983 to 1993. And during that time, we took leadership positions in such areas as, as women of color, making sure that all women of the city were included in a variety of activities. And then we were also very instrumental in being the first commission to talk about women and AIDS. And I'm really proud of that fact because too often, women are neglected or avoid, they have been avoided in that whole area. So, again, I commend the Commission for its passion, for its leadership in women's issues.
Okay, Paula, you're on. And maybe you'd like to introduce the rest of the crowd.
Thank you. I would just like to say briefly, I was going through the archives of some of the Commission ordinances and what have you back in '75 and there was a CAO report that basically said they were afraid that this Commission would do things that were contrary to city policy. However, they would give us a sunset clause from 1975 to 1980 and that all of the Commission's work would be done in that five-year period. So, when Sue was talking about issues of pay equity and gender balance, it's amazing that these are still some of the same issues we're dealing with today. But I'd like to introduce some of my, some of our current commissioners that are here. Leslie Artik, Dr. Lisa Murphy, Christine Beckman, Linda Smith, and some of our friends. Linda Lux is here, Linda Loa is here, Esther Braddock, hello. Who, I'm sorry? Oh, and of course, Julia Wu, who is our president. And our staff, Veronica Hendricks and Dunn, Assistant Executive Director, Vicki is here somewhere, Vicki Reynolds. I just want to, again, thank you. One of the things that this Commission enjoys is a relationship with many of the former commissioners, former friends, former women in the community. We sort of, kind of, go everywhere together and I'm very pleased that they've been here all along to support not only me and my job, but certainly the Commission and the Commission's mission, as well as the city of L.A. And thank you, councilmember, for all of your support as well.
Thank you. Are we done? Nobody feels the need to say anything. How unusual. I think we all appreciate the work you're doing, ladies, and thank you. Keep it up. We're obviously still gonna need it. And thank you for bringing them to us, Councilmember Galanter. Thank you. Councilmember Goldberg, you have a presentation.
Madam President, members of the council, I think this must be a day for women.
Yes.
Which is not a bad day, although I am looking for my other 26 cents on that. But they owe us a fortune for all those years at 49 and then 59 and now 26. But it is my pleasure to welcome to council today members of Hadassah, who will be holding their 86th National Convention, the gala opening of which is this Sunday, July 16th. This is an organization, members with 300,000 members. That's a pretty big organization. 1,500 chapters across the country and it makes it the largest women's and the largest Jewish membership organization in the United States. And their mission has always been the same, to promote a prosperous and peaceful Israel, ensure Jewish continuity, pursue social justice, provide for health, education, and well-being of American Jewish women and their families. But they are, do not limit themselves to just one community. They have been involved in providing in Israel two hospitals, 90 outpatient clinics, and numerous community health centers. Their health, Hadassah Medical Organization, provides state-of-the-art health care to 600,000 patients a year regardless of race, regardless of religion or creed, and often treats the most critically wounded in a region of ongoing conflicts. It maintains four programs here in the United States and in Israel, the Hadassah Education Services, the Youth Aleia, Young Judea, and the Jewish National Fund. That builds parks and plants trees, tries to preserve ecology and national resources. They provide medical personnel and training as well as other relief services during international health crises, for example, in Rwanda and Bosnia-Erzegovina recently. And also, of course, they are involved in education and advocacy and community service initiatives. They work also to First Amendment protections to rights of women and rights of women to access to health, health services. So, we wanted to take this opportunity to welcome you nationally, from all over the country here to Los Angeles, to wish you much success in your 86th convention, to tell you that we hope you enjoy our city and its wonderful, this very, very, very mild summer weather for L.A., for July, and to have a successful convention so that you can continue pursuing your imperative for social justice and providing for the health and education and well-being of women and children here and abroad. I'd like to ask Andrea Salagi, thank you, to come forward and to accept this, to introduce your colleagues and to say a few words if you care to do so.
I'm proud to be the Chair of Hadassah Southern California. I represent 24,000-plus women from San Luis Obispo to San Diego. And I'm proud to introduce Soraya Nazarian, who is our local convention chair, and Laura Kaplansky, our executive director. And on behalf of all the women who are here in Los Angeles, I say thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you.
Just for the record, Mordaya chapter life member. Okay. And so we'll go back and take a picture. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco for an introduction or a presentation. What are you doing here?
Colleagues, I wanted to introduce and recognize that we have members in the audience. We have a delegation from the city of Wuhan in China. They are here with the Cal State University of Los Angeles Associate Professor of Political Science, Sigrid Fox-Fraze. There are 24 persons, if they can stand, and just, they are CEOs of public enterprises and government agencies from China and they're here just to observe our proceedings.
Welcome to Los Angeles. We hope you enjoy it. Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. All right.
All right. Let us begin. First item.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Without objection, I'm waiting for the day someone objects to one of those, but without objection, those are approved.
Just, Madam President.
Are you gonna object to one?
No.
Oh, nice of you to tell me ahead of time. No? Sorry, but we will recognize Mr. Holden for a presentation anyway.
Oh, thank you, Madam President.
You'll owe me for this. Go ahead.
All right. Members of the council, we have a very, very important people, person with us this morning, Ms. Joella Ann McKenzie. And she's not just for a queen for a day, she's a queen for a year and years to come. She is Miss Southern California American Teen. Joella Ann, she graduated from Crenshaw Gifted Magnet School, will be attending Loyola Magnet School in the spring, which she's probably doing right now, is that correct? And she completed against, competed against 89 young women, and as Miss Southern California American Teen, she will promote education, volunteerism, and attend various engagements over the next year. She is a true role model for our young women and certainly our young people. And so, I present to you the queen, Miss Southern California American Teen, Joella Ann McKenzie. Want to say hello?
Good morning. It is with my greatest pleasure that I thank Councilman Nate Holden and the remainder of the city council for having me here today. It is truly a statement of faith when city leaders, as yourselves, take time and invest it in our youth, which illustrates my pageant theme, youth, pride of the present, hope for the future. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, and congratulations.
You will.
Okay. Moving right along. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item, Madam President, you have confirmation of city officials. Item number one is confirmation of Miguel Contreras' reappointment to the Board of Airport Commissioners for the term ending June 30th, 2005.
Anybody wish to be heard? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Next item.
Item number two is confirmation of Christopher C. Pack, Board of Airport Commissioners for the term ending June 30th, 2005.
Anybody wish to be heard on Mr. Pack's nomination? Open the roll. All right. Push the button.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, I just wanted to find out--
Did you push the speaker button, though?
I did.
Okay, there you go. Now it's on. Go ahead.
Just wanted to find out, which seat are you taking? Are you replacing?
I'm adding.
You're added?
That's correct.
You remember that the new charter added two slots.
I just heard yesterday that, just heard just this minute, that Leland Wong has been removed from--
Now, this is, Mr. Pack has been appointed to the, one of the two seats that were added by the charter to include a resident--
Nothing to do with you, sir.
I understand.
Okay, different issue.
Okay.
And I hadn't heard that.
I just heard that.
All right. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, that was the only question I had. Fine. Open the roll on Mr. Pack's nomination. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
You are approved, confirmed. Thank you very much, and forthwith on that as well. Okay, next item.
Item number 24 is confirmation of Richard Luna to the South L.A. Area Planning Commission.
Mr. Luna. I'm informed by the mayor's office that Mr. Luna has withdrawn his name from consideration. So, we'll receive and file item 24 unless there is an objection. Receive and file. Next item.
Item 25 is also confirmation, Robert Nizic, to the Recreation and Parks Commissioners for the term ending June 30th, 2005.
All right. Ms. Zikowsky got there before you, Mr. Savornich, but push your button.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the matter that has been on the agenda for a couple of days, and a council vote has not yet achieved eight votes. I wanted to discuss this today, because I was one of the people who voted first for Mr. Nizic and then against him on the second day. And today, I would be happy and pleased to make a motion to support him. But I think that he's not here is not necessarily relevant, because I think the council concern about this has not been with Mr. Nizic. And I think Mr. Savornich and others have testified to his community involvement, his serving on other commissions. But I think his appointment and recommendation did raise some issues that I think the council has wanted to address. And so, I'm gonna use this opportunity to indicate that I will be bringing in a motion next week to say that I believe the council should have a policy, and that council policy should be in relation to all future commission appointments, and that motion should go to an appropriate committee for discussion. Members of the council, clearly, as we learned through the charter, the charter members said that the council ought not to be just a routine rubber stamp of commission appointments. And as the mayor himself makes appointments, I know that that commission appointment serves at the pleasure of the mayor, but we are all aware that as every commissioner is asked to be appointed or is appointed, the mayor asks that an undated letter of resignation is made a part of the file, so that if that pleasure of the mayor is no longer occurring, that that resignation occurs. I believe that as a policy that has long existed, whether written or not in this city, that as a commissioner in the city would run for public office in the city, that commissioner would step down. And that was clearly the policy in the previous administration, and it clearly had been the policy in practice of this current administration up to more recent times. I think we can all think of a number of members of the public who ran for election four years ago, three years ago, and did resign their commission appointments before they ran. And I think that made sense. I believe that that's a policy that the city should consider, is something that is. But I guess, to be fair, there are current members sitting on commissions who are now in that situation where the policy is not applicable. And so, I did not think it was fair to continue to hold Mr. Nizic's confirmation up for that policy. But I do believe that the policy is something that should be discussed. I will be bringing that motion, and I think the council should have their say, and to see whether or not there is eight votes on the, there are eight votes on the council, to determine whether or not that should be a policy henceforth.
Thank you. Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I guess at this juncture, we can do two things. We either can vote to see if there are eight votes for the confirmation, or we can continue the matter. I do think that if we have an individual that has agreed to serve the city, and, you know, however, I understand that there's maybe a greater public policy issue that needs to be addressed, that what we should confirm, and I believe that, again, and I will publicly state it for the record, that Mr. Nizic is well-qualified to serve as a Recreation and Parks Commissioner. But let's just go beyond that for a moment. Each and every one of us around this horseshoe has embraced, at one time or another, the feeling that their particular area is sometimes not as well-represented on various commissions as they would like to see them be. In the new charter, even though a majority of us opposed it, we were able to have, in some of the proprietary departments, I know at least harbor and airports, to make sure that there was a representative from the geographic area surrounding the harbor or the airports, a commission appointment. It has been many, many years. In fact, I cannot recall a resident of the harbor area being on the Recreation and Parks Commission in my memory. There may have been maybe 10, 20, 30 years ago, but I don't recall one. And if indeed, we want to continue to outreach to all parts of the city, and I remembered when I first got on the office, speaking to Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Holden, and Councilwoman Walters and Mr. Ridley Thomas, that the amount of commission appointments south of the 10 were lacking. And now, here's an opportunity to put a harbor area resident who is well-qualified to serve on the Recreation and Parks Commission on the commission, but we can't seem to muster the votes. And so, today, I believe there should be votes, and I would ask for an aye vote for his confirmation today.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
Members of council, the only reason I rise is to address the policy issue that was brought up. I think it's an important discussion that has to be held, even though I know several members of the city council are running for other offices and haven't resigned. And when I say that, you need to understand, under a previous administration, I was a commissioner who didn't resign and was running for city council. But I sat on the Pueblo de los Anquiles as a commission at a time when I had been serving on that commission when I didn't have intentions of running on the office, and I happened to be sitting on that commission when I ran for office. But I then used the expertise from sitting on that commission to try and make sure we straighten out some of the issues of the trilateral agreement between the state and the county when I sat on Arts, Health, and Humanities. And so, I was able to use part of that expertise for that purpose. And that's why I think I was the author of Proposition H in terms of the long-term leases for the merchants. It gave me some experience that I didn't quite have as a businessman, and it gave me an opportunity to work with the city. So, I just kinda wanna address those issues. You know, a lot of these appointments confuse me only because there's a year left, and a new mayor's gonna come in and set a different kind of direction. I think Recreation and Parks, right now, has some tremendous work that has to be done in regards to capital improvement projects without losing the focus of its role as recreation facilities. And they, I went to a recent commission meeting where three members were present. And so, from my perspective, I'm trying to help them accomplish the task of having some representatives on that commission that create a balance and allow them to deliberate and have some dialogue in their decision-making. And so, I'll be supporting this appointment at this time.
Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say to Ms. Zikowsky that when your motion comes, I will certainly support that. And it was not the lack of a council policy on this issue that disturbed me when I raised the issue. It was trying to understand the mayor's policies. These are mayoral appointments, and for the most part, I have voted in favor of most of the mayor's appointments. But he made such a to-do about it in the last election with Stan Sanders and Roberta Weintraub. And there was one other person, who was it? Ted Stein, that I was surprised, very surprised, to see the appointment of Mr. Nizic here. I explained to Mr. Nizic in committee, and I said here, that he went to the right schools. I'm pleased about that. He seems an earnest young man. So, the, my vote against it was not personal. It was taking the mayor at the word of his policy, that he didn't want people appointed that were running for office. And before the last meeting, the mayor's office said they had no such policy. Well, the folks that were asked to resign before would like to have known that.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say, having attended a number of the different charter commission meetings, one of the themes that pervaded both commissions was the importance of the council more closely scrutinizing appointments to city commissions, especially given the balance of the content of the new charter. That was deemed a big deal. And the other thing I want to say is, I agree with Mr. Savornich that we should have more well-qualified residents of San Pedro functioning on city commissions.
Mr. Holden.
Mr., I was surprised to learn that Mr. Hernandez was a commissioner before he got elected. I guess it gave him a head start, huh? But--
I think Mr. Ferrara was, too.
Mr. Ferrara was also. But I think they had to resign when they filed the declaration of intent to run, not declaration of intent, when they filed their papers and qualified as a candidate on the ballot. Homer Broome had to leave when I was in the race. Mr. Stan Sanders had to leave when I was in the race. And others had to leave as well. They had to resign. Ted Stein had to leave when he filed his papers and became a bona fide candidate. That's the cutoff point. Anything else is simply political. I have my candidate, you have your candidate. We're gonna fight for our candidates at the very start. This is the beginning of it. But is it fair? I don't think so. I think the way you defeat a guy or a person is at the ballot box. That's where you defeat him. If we do anything else, we being just as political as we accusing the mayor of being, or is it namaste? That's where I wanna defeat him. I have another candidate, and I'm gonna fight them fair and square. I'm gonna vote for him today, this guy, but he understands. I have another candidate, and I told him that my candidate was so good, we're gonna whip him on election day. Okay? Well, he understands that. I'll give him a vote today, and I'll take a vote and weigh, vote against him tomorrow. But that's under different circumstances. That's the democratic process. So, I'm sure that those other candidates don't like this, but that's beside the point. We should not be this political. I don't think so, anyway. I mean, I'd like to have a worthy opponent and let him face off with you, and if you, the best person, the people will select you. If you're not, they won't. They'll take what they want, they'll consider it to be best for them at the time. And I'm talking to even my candidate as I speak.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. All right. Open the roll on Mr. Savornich's motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, four noes.
All right. Mr. Nizic is confirmed, forthwith on that, please. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items three through 14.
All right. Items three through 14. We have a card on item seven and a card on item 12, so we'll call them special. Any council members have any specials, three through 14? Three through 14, and the ones that have cards are seven and 12. Okay, ready? Open the roll on three through--
President, with respect to item 14, I simply need to make a minor amendment to change the date of the dedication ceremony to September 6th.
All right. Let's do that now. So, open the roll on three through 14, as amended, with the exception of seven and 12. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 15 through 22.
All right. I do not have any cards on any of those items, so if there's anybody in the audience who wants to speak on any of those items, we need you to let us know right now. And in the absence of that, we will open and close the public hearings on items 15 through 25.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, sorry. Open the roll. Any council members? Any specials? Anything to say? Open the roll on items 15 through 22. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
On the continued agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, items 26 and 27.
Ms. Goldberg has called them both special. Next item.
Items on, also on the continued agenda, items 28 and 29, public hearings have not been held.
All right. I don't have any cards on those either. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on items 28 or 29? Seeing none, the public hearings on those items are closed, and the matters are before the council. Open the roll. 29 special, Ms. Goldberg. Open the roll on item 28. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item seven was, excuse me, has a card on the--
Yes. All right. So, we're gonna go to item seven, and we'll hear from Margarita Sanchez. Step right up. Step right up.
Good morning, members of the city council. We want to thank you very much in advance for what we hope to be your vote to give us our tonnage limitations in our streets. It's been a struggle by our neighborhood in order to attain something that a lot of other neighborhoods do have, and we really do appreciate the fact that you are expediting this with us and have given us your unanimous support. We want to really thank our councilman, Nick Pacheco, and Rudy Sovorich for having presented the motion, and especially our councilman, who has helped us push this through during these seven months that it's been taken.
Do you want to let us -- now let's see if we can get you that unanimous vote.
Please do. Thank you very much, everybody.
All right. Thank you all for coming and for your work. Mr. Pacheco, before we vote, go ahead.
Madam President and colleagues, I just wanted to echo what the residents said. This is very important to the community. They have struggled very hard to have Seventh Street limited in terms of diesel fuel trucks going down it. It's a very heavily congested area right now, and I think this is a step in the right direction for the city. As many of you know, the community of Ball Heights has about five freeways that were put in there in the '60s, and many of them have on-ramps and off-ramps that are basically next to people's homes. So we are working with the California Trucking Association, and they have been very cooperative in working with us to guide all of the trucks as soon as possible into the industrial area. So thirty days from now, there will be no more trucks on Seventh Street, which is a major step forward. And the legislature, we anticipate, through Senator Polanco, is going to be helping us get some funding to modify those on-ramps in the industrial area so that they can facilitate usage by these trucks. So today's vote is a starting point. I want to encourage you all to vote yes, and the community has worked very hard for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, I rise to support Mr. Pacheco. His is a motion that is in line with much of what we must attend to in terms of the issues of environmental protection, environmental quality, as well as environmental justice. And I think this ordinance is a part of what you will soon see to be a fully-blown agenda for the city of Los Angeles that does seek to take its rightful place among those who are attempting to work more strategically in terms of an environmental quality agenda. So I think we're in good stead, and I want to thank Mr. Pacheco for his leadership in bringing this forward.
Thank you. Let me just -- since I don't think I did it yet, let me formally close the public hearing, and we'll now -- no one else seems to want to say anything, so let's open the roll on item twelve. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Seven, sorry.
Thirteen ayes.
There's your unanimous vote. That's approved. Might as well send it forthwith, since we got a unanimous vote. Now we go to item twelve, right? Jumping the gun here. Item twelve, we have one card, Mr. Richard Robinson. Mr. Robinson, are you here? I don't see him. In that case, we're going to close the public hearing on item twelve, and the matter is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item seems to be twenty-six.
Call special by council member Goldberg.
Ms. Goldberg, could you push the speaker button, please? Thank you. Thank you. I did take a look at the fire facility bond measure, and if you take a look at the districts that are going to get some attention, we don't have one, three, thirteen, and fourteen at all. And is that because there are absolutely no needs in those three areas? Is that right?
I went -- Bill Mercer from the Office of Administrative and Research Services. It's not that there is no needs, it's just that the needs were deemed by the fire department to be less. The facilities are either newer, larger, so the priority was lower, and just didn't get to them this time.
But see, they aren't newer and larger in my area, so I don't know about everybody else. They can speak for themselves.
Fire Department should address this.
Yeah. I think that'd be good.
They're here.
And we had stations closed in my area and never replaced.
Yes, good morning. John Callahan, Fire Department. The need is great throughout the city to replace over eighty fire stations, and there's a long-term plan to do that. In the present situation, we're going down the list and prioritizing the ones that are most needed. What we're trying to do in this particular proposal here is to replace stations that need to be moved to new locations in order to reduce response times, develop a network of regional training facilities out there, regional stations that have the space to pull other companies in for regular in-service training that can be done closer to the home districts as opposed to pulling them to a centralized facility far away from their area. And thirdly, to replace some of the stations that need additional resources because of their areas and the surrounding areas but don't have the capabilities of holding them. We have a number of stations on this list that have -- that are single-bays, meaning that there's only one door for the apparatus to respond out of, and if the rescue ambulance is parked in the front and the engine is behind and gets a run, the rescue has to be moved out of the way for the engine to respond. Those are the ones that we're trying to replace with this bond measure here.
Well, I'm not going to delay this or delay it, but you asked me before what I was worried about in naming them. Eleven of these are in the Valley and West Side out of nineteen. And I just have a hard time believing that those are the only two parts of the city that are having any difficulty with having not enough facilities for fire, particularly since areas like Mr. Hernandez's and mine have high volume. I mean, it's unfortunate that we have high volume, but we have high volume. And so, you know, I just thought I would raise this because I think this will be a trend. When we start naming projects, I think we're going to start seeing a drift toward where voters are more abundant in number, and that's, you know, a concern of mine. Mrs. Chick.
Well, actually, I'd like that concern addressed. The figure was just given eleven out of nineteen. The other eight, in terms of locations, are not in the Valley and in West LA. Where are they located?
They are--
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. We're building a brand-new fire station in San Pedro that we hope to open down there to fill a gap between stations and reduce response times. We intend to build a new regional facility in South Los Angeles, replace the Watts Station, which is the oldest station in the city right now.
Do I have a list that puts that -- that gives that information to me? What are you reading off of?
I'm not sure what you have in front of you there.
A file listing the nineteen stations should be before you, I'd hope.
Okay. I haven't turned to that item. I was more interested in the criteria that was used that you have just run through with Ms. Goldberg, because I think that absolutely the locations that we should be picking and the way we should be prioritizing should be based on very clear criteria that we and the public should understand, that, of course, need is the driving force and improving service to the public, and also safety, and also looking at safety of our city employees. And so I somehow didn't hear that theme coming through when you discussed the criteria, and I think it would be good if you addressed that. In terms of listing location or the projects, colleagues, also, I definitely am not supportive of listing them by council district, for instance. I'm not sure exactly how we are planning to list them. I know for the animal services bond, there are large geographic areas, and I think that's true here as well. But I can't think of any other way to deal with something else that's a very legitimate concern, and that's reassuring the public throughout the city that there's a reason, good cause, a need, why we're asking for the money, and that we're being very thoughtful about what we're using it for, and that we're telling them. And again, the kind of work that's been done here in prioritizing, in narrowing down, in making the hard choices, is being done partly because we are telling the public what we're going to do. We are having to do that research. Mr. Mercer, I think you've been involved in these things for quite a while, and am I not right that part of the problems we've had, that so many have talked about in delivering what we said we were going to deliver, is because the list was never done in a thoughtful way to begin with back in eighty-nine? The list wasn't done in a thoughtful way, the cost estimates weren't figured properly, the chances of our delivering exactly those things were not very good because it hadn't been formulated in the way it has been now.
Correct, in the way it was just last year when we went to the voters. I think the real answer to your question is shown pretty clearly -- the question Ms. Goldberg was asking, as well as you, was shown very clearly on the map that engineering delivered to the different offices today. It shows the stations that were replaced over the last twenty years. The vast bulk of those were on the center and the northeast portions of the city. Those were some of the oldest stations, the smallest stations. They've been replaced.
And it made sense they were done first.
Yes, that's right. And now it's time to go to the next level.
And also, colleagues, I think we need to be careful when we look at what legitimate criteria are, that it's not always based on density, it's not always based on socioeconomic levels. Some of it's based on when the last time was we replaced stations. But the number-one thing has to be need, and I think there'll be other questions, and I hope that the fire department can go back to improve service to the public and how this is based on need. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I have four more people who've asked to speak on this one, and we do have another bond-issue item. I've also been informed by the city attorney's office that because of time constraints in the city attorney's office, if we want to take up item thirty today, we're going to have to do it very close to eleven-thirty. It's now eleven-twenty-three. So I point that out. Well, now I have five people that want to speak here. So I've got five more on this one, and then we still have the other bond issue, and we may have-- I'm sorry, do what? We can do that. It's up to the council. But, you know, if we're close to finishing, I'd rather finish this and be done with it. Mr. -- all right. Mr. Hernandez, you're up next.
You know, members of the council, Ms. Chick brought up a good point, because our fire safety plan has and allocation of resources has nothing to do with human lives, and where we're losing lives because of fires. It has to do with structures and response time, and audit after audit has told us where resources have been spent. See, one of the things that's offending to me, and I'm actually at the point where I'm going to vote no, and I've been very supportive of the fire department, but what I clearly understand right now is that if San Pedro succeeds, if the Valley succeeds, if West LA succeeds, the bottom line is my constituents, through an assessment, get to pay for these facilities. That is a fact. And it's at this time that we're introducing a bond measure to provide facilities, and really, no facilities are being provided in Mr. Pacheco's district, in my district, and in this district. And I deal with fires. That's why I have so much respect for the fire department. But how could I be asked, my constituents, to pay for an assessment in that kind of environment, knowing that they don't benefit? And they do not benefit. If anything, they're creating a system and continuing a system that takes away resources from areas where we have units with a lot of people living in them. See, if you allocate your resources according to the number of units, my reality is, I have apartment buildings. I don't have single-family homes. But the other reality I have to face is the loss of lives because of fires. It's a fact. And I can point to Burlington, and I can point to a lot of the deaths since then. I can point to the fact that when our audits told us, we didn't have enough fire inspectors inspecting in the inner city because of the number of units compared to the number of units we had out in the Valley. And now I'm hearing the same kinds of arguments regarding facilities. But the real argument is, in previous bond issuances, it was important to take into account the entire city so that you can ask the voters, the constituents in that area, to support the bond measure. Why would I ask someone in Mount Washington, where they have fire threats all the time, someone in Montecito Heights, someone in Lincoln Heights, to support this bond measure to build more facilities? I mean, the fire department is not offering them anything except an assessment.
If I can respond to that, the bottom line on all these prioritizations is service to the public and reduction of response times, and those are the areas that need the improvements in response times. We're not saying that the--
But you're going to charge the people in Mount Washington and Montecito Heights as part of the bond assessment?
I think the other thing to point out is that the fire protection, the EMS providing service in this city is extremely dynamic, and to say that a station that's on one side of the street in one council district is not providing service to the district which is -- the line is on the other side of the street is just not true.
Yeah, but the First, the Thirteenth, and the Fourteenth is not one side of the street.
The movement of resources around the city, when the need arises, is instantaneous. When the brush fire breaks out in the city, we do draw from the metropolitan area and send them out there to put out that brush fire. When the need is in the central city, when the library or the high-rise building burns, the resources are coming the other direction.
And again, we've dealt with those issues. I understand those issues. What are you offering the constituents of the First and the Thirteenth and the Fourteenth as to why they should pay for this bond issuance?
What we're offering here is a system of regional fire stations--
You're not offering them anything.
All right. Mr. Wax.
I want to raise a different aspect. Is Ms. Roth here, or someone from the mayor's office? I had been concerned, just generally with both bond issues, that the costs, the overall management costs, the program management, the project management, and the construction management be such that we avoid the problems with Belmont and others where hugely excessive amounts were unnecessarily wasted in management costs. And Mr. Troyan had prepared for me, at least with the fire bond, and we had a similar analysis, I think, with the other bonds, a comparison that was very favorable and indicated that we were, in fact, keeping our management costs down significantly below what plagued Belmont. I had asked Ms. Roth on the mayor's office if they would, in the interim time between when these were prepared and now, analyze them to make sure that they felt comfortable, that they accurately reflected the situation, so that we could go on with this. I don't -- and I would hope that they would do this, especially since the mayor's office is assuming a much greater role in the fiscal management of the city. This is the fundamental type of thing that I believe that they should be doing. And I made it clear, I don't really want necessarily their political opinion, whether they like it or not. I just want to know whether they've reviewed the facts and they find these to be accurate so that we can each make our own decisions. So we -- in fact, we continued for a couple of days so that we could get that input, and I'm wondering if there's anyone here to provide that input. It's important to me that I know, it's not that I don't trust, but, you know, the staff who prepared this, but I think that the mayor's office should give an independent assessment of the accuracy of the figures. So is there anyone here to do that?
Doesn't look like it.
Could we call and ask that they--
I think somebody -- I think someone from the mayor's staff has already called upstairs.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Now, members of the council, it's now eleven-thirty. We clearly -- we have four more people who've asked to speak of our own council members, and we have clearly questions and time to be spent in answering it. If you want to take up item thirty today, which the city attorney has encouraged us to do because there's money riding on this-- because there's money riding on this, we're going to need to do it, we're going to need to recess this item and do that. And unless there, I hear a strenuous objection, I'm reluctantly going to have to ask all of you who are not involved in the closed session to depart while we take care of that business, and as soon as we are able, we'll get back to this. I apologize to you, Mr. Knapp, and others, yes, Mrs. Walters.
Point of information, please.
Yes.
What is the necessity of taking this up by 11:30 on the part of the city attorney?
Apparently, the city attorney has to be somewhere else, and in order to have the city attorney available, we need to do it now.
As the council remembers, they requested that Mr. Han and Mr. McCosker be here. So because of the timeframe with the Department of Justice issues and all the other things that are going on, they have a very tight schedule.
Okay, fine, thanks. Then that means all the animal wreck people, police department, anybody that's not concerned with item 30...
Unfortunately, that's exactly what it means. And that's why I apologize to them all. I don't know how long the closed session is going to take. With any luck, we won't be keeping everybody else waiting for very long. Jackie, while we're clearing the room, do you want to do your reconsideration?
Sure, I'd like to reconsider our action on the airport permits.
Oh, okay.
All right, open the roll on reconsideration.
No, no, open the roll.
Hello, we're reconsidering the, open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, that's reconsidered, Ms. Goldberg.
Well, they're still working on it, so I would like to move that we approve the permits for all of the airlines at LAX and keep it in council and not send it on.
All right, okay, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 1 no.
All right, that is approved, and that was very efficient. And the room is not yet clear. Yes, we do, because there's money involved. Ms. Masekowsky.
Particularly the bond items, that July 19th is the critical last day by which we can instruct anybody to put anything on...
Right.
Those who have questions, both those that will be publicly...
We've asked, the fire department has said, when I asked them whether they wanted to continue it or come back, they said that they would like to use the interval to talk with the individual council offices.
That's what I was going to suggest, that all questions be put to them, not that should cut off debate, but that a lot of that information can be made for us, so then we can have a more healthy and full debate on Tuesday.
Well, I'll announce that too when we're, all right, we're back. Okay, item 30.
Item 30, a settlement in the case of Pratt versus United States of America at all in the amount of $2,750,000.
Mr. Holden, do you want to be in your seat for this? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, open the roll. I'm waiting for you, I haven't closed it yet. Have to pay attention around here. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
8 ayes, 6 noes.
All right, that is approved, forthwith on that item. During the, just before we went into closed session, we were in the middle of item 26, and the, in consultation with the fire department, they've suggested that we continue that item until next Tuesday, and they would like to use the intervening time to work with individual council offices and answer your respective questions. We're also going to continue item 27, the animal regulation issue, and item 29, which is a related matter. We did vote on 28 earlier. And I believe that completes, item 20, I'm sorry, item 23, the closed session is also continued until Tuesday, the 18th. And we do have a special, special number one.
We do?
Yes, we do, it's sitting right there in that box that nobody picked up. Ms. Weingard, have you seen this one?
Yes.
All right, you'll do the findings part.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There was a tentative tract map that was approved...
Wait, 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 hold on a second. Can we have a little quiet here? We're not done yet. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you. There was a tentative tract map that was approved in 1998. This is the final tract map, this is for the Cinerama Dome project. In order for the financing and the CRA bond money to happen, it has to happen in two weeks, and the, within two weeks, the end of this month, the beginning of August, and on July 11th, the engineer's office first released their recommendations regarding this tract map. So the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose, after the posting of the agenda, and that there's an immediate need to act.
All right, open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, the matters before us, Ms. Goldberg.
I'd just like to move the item. It's a, it is a ministerial action on our part, but it triggers an enormous amount of effort that has to happen very quickly in order to make sure that the financing, which has been proposed, gets actually done, does not involve public money, that part of it anyway. The other parts have already been voted on.
Okay, so you're moving approval, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That's approved, forthwith on that. And, that completes our agenda, except for public comment. And I suspect that this may be the troop whose names I have here. We normally have a 10-minute public comment period, and I have a lot of people who want to be heard, most of them from the Lula Washington Dance Theater. So I'm going to try to separate out the ones that don't say they're related to that Lula Washington Dance Theater, and we'll go through as far as we can here. Okay, nearly everybody's from the Lula Washington Dance Theater, and there seem to be lots of you. Okay, can you set the clock for our 10-minute public hearing? Have we let everybody in who wants to be in? Okay. Don't start the clock yet. Madam Clerk, maybe we ought to do, if we have any excuses or any of the rest of those things, let's do those while we're waiting for the doors to be fully opened.
We have motions for posting and referral.
Without objection, those are approved.
You have an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Walter has requested to be excused city business Wednesday, July 26th, meets council policy.
That's approved, unanimous vote.
That clears the desk.
That's it, okay. I'm going to start calling names, if you're not here, we'll go on to the next person. First, Lula Washington. And please remember, just, I don't know how many of you actually want to talk, or how many of you want to wave, get up there and say, "We also," but we're going to, just, we're going to stop at 10 minutes, so go ahead. Ms. Washington, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lula Washington. I'm really glad to have the opportunity to come here and speak before the city council today. I want to personally thank Ruth Galanter for the presentation that she gave, our dance company, for 20 years of service to the city, and of course, our wonderful councilman, Mr. Nate Holden, we're in the 10th district. We're here today because we want you to see us and hear us. We are in a current lawsuit with the Community Redevelopment Agency, and we just feel like no one really understands our point of view, our voice. We've been trying to build our new studio that was damaged during the Northridge earthquake. We had all of our paperwork approved and everything, we've been denied that opportunity to do that since 1998. We've been trying to build our studio. We have all of our FEMA money in place. What we need to do is be fairly looked at, looked at in a fair manner. We need to let you all know that we've been in the community for 20 years, and we have made a significant difference. We need to be supported in our relocation fee, we need to be supported with support for the hardship, the financial hardship that has been created because of the community redevelopment, wanting to build a shopping center on our site, which has caused great hardship and financial difficulty. So we are asking the city council to please look at the hardship created by the community redevelopment to build the shopping center, without asking us to come in and sit down to see how they have impacted us. We stopped the drug dealing going on on Adams Boulevard when we first came there. So we feel that we've made a commitment. These are some of our students and parents here, and they're going to all say, one minute real quick, starting with Lane, Board Name, one of our parents has been with us, and then our board member, Dr. Beadson Salo, very quickly.
Good morning, good afternoon. I'm a parent of a 12-year-old. He was awarded a $4,000 scholarship this summer to go to Massachusetts, but he turned it down to perform this summer with the Lula Washington Youth Dance Ensemble at the Ford Theater on August 5th. I'm also a board member at large for the Angeles Girl Scout Council. The committee I serve on for the last year and a half is the New Site Task Force. It is a sad day for the Girl Scouts, after more than 25 years in our community, will now have to move. Every space we have seen, the rent is double. Several of you are familiar with my more than 30 years as a community activist. The concern I have is that the city is asking our children to leave their home.
Dr. Beadson Salo, one of our board members.
I am both a parent and an educator, a professor, at California State University, Long Beach. I have had two daughters that have gone through Lula Washington from age four, one of them already graduated from college, and the other one is graduating from high school. And this organization has made a very, very big difference in those children's lives, as well as in hundreds and hundreds of others. We want the city council to understand that the way the CRA is treating us is just unfair, and that by taking over our property on Adams by simply, you know, eminent domain, we will not even have half of what we need to relocate, to go to another site, and to be able to purchase, you know, another property and go on. The other difficulty in which we are being put, of course, is the matter of time. There is no way we can tell how long it's going to take for the CRA to do what it needs to do and to compensate us, and we need your support, you members of the city council, to get the CRA off our back, do what they have to do, and, you know, let us go on and, you know, purchase another piece of property and move on. Thank you.
I'd like, quickly, for Tamika, our associate director. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tamika Washington, I'm the associate director, and Lula and Erwin are my parents. And I just want to quickly just touch on the importance and the value of the history that is at stake with the threat of losing our land. We used to have an inner-city cultural center, we used to have Ebony Showcase Theater, and now those places are gone. And Lula Washington has been there for 20 years as an institution for artists in the community to come and create and do their work, for young people to come and learn not only dance, but get the skills that they need to go on in life. Graduates from the Lula Washington Dance Theater have gone on to graduate from college, start their own businesses, become parents, and we just want to make sure that the tradition is continued and people, artists of color have a place to continue to work. Thank you.
Trade of Parks, one of our dance instructors at our studio.
Yes, I have known Lula Washington for over 30 years, and I've seen how she has grown in the community with the school, and I, my class that I teach on Saturdays is a class that has grown in the community, and not only have they grown in dance, they have grown in their own personality, and to take this away would be taking away children doing other things, not only in math, in science, in social studies, the dance that we have, the drama, and all these things that Lula has in her school, is making these kids aware of all those things, not just dance, in all aspects of life, and we need that in this community. Thank you.
One of our professional dance company members that tours all over the United States with us, we're a nationally owned company, we're not just local, we're recognized as one of the top leading black dance companies in the United States.
Good afternoon, my name is Anthony Jackson, and I'm a principal dancer with the Lula Washington Dance Theater. I also teach there, and it's given me the opportunity to get close to these children that you see around you. I have seen firsthand the positive effect that the organization has had on the community. For example, I have seen children get scholarships to college who, without the dance training, would not have gotten an opportunity to go to college, and I think that there in itself is reason enough for the council and the city to continue to back, continue to back Lula Washington Dance Theater and the organization. And for that, I want to take this opportunity to thank Lula Washington and her family for their continued work. Here in LA, there are many groups and organizations that do the same thing for their own causes in every district, and I salute all of you. However, there aren't many organizations in our community that are doing this dedicated to our community, dedicated to the participation of the children in the community. And for this, I want to say thank you again to Lula. Thank you for all your diligent work towards the development of our youth, the preservation of the arts, and for the opportunity to celebrate life. And I encourage the city council to recognize, cherish, and respect the organization, and for this, I am truly, truly thankful and very proud. Thank you, and God bless.
Mike Nakuauchi, one of our dance company members, we're an interracial dance company, we tour all over, not only that, with the music center on tour, we cover every city council district in here, through a music center on tour, we've been every school, all over the city and county.
Don't worry, you're getting your point across. Go ahead.
My name is Mike Nakuauchi, and I've been a performing member of the Lula Washington Dance Theater for over three years. The company has not only performed across the country, but also extended its hand across the city of Los Angeles with the community outreach program that has been well received by students, teachers, and parents alike. No matter what your color, your background, or culture, the learning experience Lula Washington provides is a truly valuable one, and a community without this is a lessened one. In a time where shopping centers are growing like weeds across our landscape, it is time to uproot and allow the flower of performing arts to bloom. If you truly wish to continue the growth of this city, I beg you to consider keeping Lula Washington Dance Theater a part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leroy Meadows, our stage director, who travels with us all over the United States.
I just want to say briefly that when the earthquake hit, what it did, it not only just toppled a building, but it crippled an institution, and we're asking to shore up the institution and let the CRA know how important it is that that is done. They have already approved, as she said initially, that they approved all the plans, they said what plans needed to be done. The company paid the expenses to have all the plans done, all the permits done, and after the permits were all done, then the CRA withheld the funds, and that's where we are at now.
Stop this from building the building.
Stop this from building the building, thank you.
Annette Stewart, who was one of the original mothers with us, over on Adams Boulevard.
Hi, as well as a parent of students that attend Lula Washington, I was one of the original dancers with her company. And I'd just like to say that when I was here earlier, I saw a lady that received a large amount of money from her organization, and what Lula Washington does is, she might cannot give a large amount of money to the city to donate, but what she's giving is much, much more than the money that anyone can ever give. She is giving into lives, and the lives that she has touched, no one can put a value on that. So please see that, that maybe a shopping center will bring in business and dollars for the community, but what Lula is giving to our community, which reaches out to our city, which reaches out to our state, and is going, and is worldwide, no dollar can replace.
Thank you.
Jamila, one of our up-inspiring dancers for the 2000th century.
Hi, my name is Jamila Crown, I'm eight years old. I love Lula Washington's Dance Theater because it motivates me in a lot of ways. If one day the studio was gone, I would break out into tears because there's, there would be not, there would not be anything to do as fun as dance, because Lula Washington has worked very hard at keeping dance alive in LA for 20 years. Because of that, I cannot live without dance, so, thank you.
Thank you. Lauren, pull the mic up close to your mouth, so we can really hear you. There you go.
Hi, I'm Lauren Baker, and I feel that dance gives me strength and energy, it also motivates... It also motivates me. Dance is my future and dance is my life. I think that you should give Lula Washington the land because they need it and because they deserve it.
Thank you. Arianna.
Good afternoon, my name is Arianna Grant, I am 13 years old. Today, I'm proud to be a representative of Lula Washington Dance Theater to help settle their situation. Ever since I've attended Lula Washington Dance Theater, I, my self-confidence, my self-esteem, and my self-motivation has built it up. Our youth, our young adults are inspired to become productive citizens in our community today. I'm hopeful that you, the members of city council, will support Lula Washington Dance Theater's commitment to make a difference in the lives of our youth. So in conclusion, I leave you with this one thought. If you take the dance theater away from us, you'll break apart a family, but also the dreams of our youth. Thank you.
Also, we're not here about the money, we're here about justice. We're here about being able to do what we want to do, art, dance, keeping culture alive in the community. That's all we're asking. We're a small group, please reconsider what is happening to us. I guess that was a cutoff sign.
That's about it, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you all for coming and thank you for doing what you do. Mr. Holden, I understand you wanted to make a comment. Let me just formally close the, we do have some people on a different topic, so Mr. Holden, maybe you'd make a comment and I'm going to ask the other people if they want to speak.
The Lula Washington Dance Studio has been very active in the community for many years, of course, you all know of a reputation. And this office has been very supportive, even before I was elected, Councilman Cunningham was very supportive. Unfortunately, the earthquake came and the rest is history. But you got to understand one thing, the money was set aside by FEMA for $1 billion, I believe. The rent, we got a location on Pico Boulevard, your rent was paid free by FEMA. And so, we've been given, I guess, a super savings since I've been here, $27,000. We, that's what he said.
Okay, Mr. Holden--
I'm just saying, what I'm basically saying is that this office has not turned its back on you. We know who owns the property.
Okay, wait, wait.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You are, you sir, Mr. Washington, have filed a lawsuit against the city and CRA.
All right, but Mr. Holden, the reason I keep trying to interrupt you is that we do have a problem that under the Brown Act, we can't really discuss an item that's not on the agenda. We invite members of the public to come in and talk to us about items not on the agenda. So we all know that this is not the end of the conversation, this is the beginning of the, or it's not the beginning, it's part of an ongoing conversation. And let's not argue the issue out here.
Can we just make one closing remark? Nate Holden's supported us and I want to thank him for that. And I know he's trying to help us now. So we're not here to fight the council, we're not here to fight Nate. And, but the issue is, really, the issues around the case are not clear. No one knows them.
Right.
We need to talk to get them clear. That's all we want.
That's my point, Mr. Washington. This is not the place for us to do that. We do need to do it, okay? And I really want to let the people who are here on another topic have a few thoughts. Exactly, thank you for the time, thank you very much. Thank you for coming. And for all of you who did not speak, your names will also be in the file as having been here and having expressed your interest. Thank you. Okay, on other, we are actually over the time, but we have some other people here. Manuel, I can't read it. Val, okay, Vaya. Then Richard Robinson and Candido Maras.
Good afternoon, my name is Manuel Vaya. And, you know, that, the people that just got through speaking in the dance studio, you know, I mean, I find it very difficult to see that they get refused with all the chaos that's going on in Los Angeles and all the wonderful things that they're doing. So, I mean, and I think it's a, I'm from Santa Barbara and just to hear this kind of stuff and read the newspaper--
All right, well, what is it that you wanted to talk to us about? Because I have two more Los Angeles residents who want to be heard also.
Okay, well, this has to do with LA. LAPD corruption runs rampant. Attention, LA City Council, I'm here today on behalf of my son, Anthony Adams, who is presently incarcerated at the California State Prison. He was arrested several years ago by several officers, one which was Officer Perez. My son was one of many who was accused of crimes that were false or misconstrued by Officer Perez. As you already know, Officer Perez has been found guilty of numerous and unspeakable crimes while serving under the alias as LAPD officer. He was uninvolved in many, he was, he was involved in many illegal acts along with Sergeant Ortiz. There was a witness to my son's arrest who has strangely been difficult to locate. I, along with several others, have substantial evidence to believe that the witness, Sonia Floydeus, has had sexual relationships with both Officer Perez and Sergeant Ortiz.
Mr. Vaya, I believe you, you were here once before talking--
I didn't say this, so--
No, I know that, but what I'm going to suggest to you, since--
You don't like--
No, that's not what I'm going to suggest at all. What I'm going to suggest is that you talk to the management, to the police chief, who is, after all, the guy who's now going after Mr. Perez, and make sure that he has that information.
I sure wish I could finish this letter because after that, I'm going to say something directly about what you're talking about.
Well, I wish you would get to it because we are over the public comment time this morning and I've agreed to let you speak and I do want to let the other people speak as well.
I've been here since 9:30 in the morning.
Well, so have I, but, I mean, if you could summarize--
You get paid, I don't.
That's true.
So I think I have--
Go ahead, you go ahead, but we're going to lose a quorum when one more person walks out of the room and it's not fair to the other people who also wish to be heard. You've made your point that you feel your son was unjustly treated. And I heard you.
You kind of messed with my, my role that I had going. I'm kind of, you as a city council must understand how important this is to me and my son. As a father, I must, I must, every, in my power to see that my son receives a fair trial. Too many people have suffered already at the hands of these cruel and misguided officers. When we put our trust in police force who has taken as a path to protect and to serve, what, that's what we should get. The worst part is that this trust was wasted and abused, leaving us with little hope for justice. I don't have my glasses. This is the end. Please hear my plea, as a father who is fighting for his son's freedom, I must believe that you believe in justice and what you will do, your part to make it happen. My son's children are without their father far too long. Please let them hope that justice will be theirs for their daddy. Signed, Manuel Vaya. Now, to what you said about the chief.
Yeah, just let me know that we've lost a quorum. We're now, I mean, you go ahead and finish, but there's no quorum here to hear--
I just, I just wanted to say that, is that last Sunday's paper, Matt Glover, Matt Layte and Mark Glover, I believe, of the LA Times wrote an article on corruption on LAPD on the rampart. And they was talking about a specific incident. That specific incident I'm aware of. I'm aware of two people that were there. The LAPD went and interviewed those two people. One was in prison, one was outside in LA in the streets. When they interviewed that person, I mean, she's seen exactly what was going on. Now, all they got is Officer Perez's words, but I'm surprised that the police department didn't submit the information from that young lady to the district attorney. They just, and so, what I'm, what I'm saying is, LAPD is not working along with the DA's office. And so if I go talk to Chief Parks, what, I mean, I'm not, you know, it's not a reality, that's a fact, and that's, I hope the Justice Department gets involved in this because this is just really, I mean, and my son's in prison, it's not your son, I know you've had problems, I remember when you had problems about seven, God, it's been about twelve--
Thirteen years ago.
I remember that very well.
So do I.
I was in the Venice area, I was a gang worker for LA County when, so, I mean, so, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm just frustrated and trying to get something done.
I know you are and I appreciate that.
I'm not going to quit, you're not going to quit.
No, I don't think, I'm not advocating that you quit. I just want to make sure that the information gets where it might be helpful.
Oh, no, I know you're not, you know, but, but thank you.
Okay. We have lost a quorum, so we are no longer officially in session. Mr. Robinson, if you want to talk anyway, as long as the council members who are still here are willing to stay, you are welcome to do so. But not for very long because now we're getting close to double the time that we're supposed to be in.
Madam President, I am a post-trivulationist. The misinterpretation of the divinely inspired word of God is a sin, selective interpretation. Ma'am, the Second World War was Armageddon. The Confederation of Axis Powers predicted--
Mr. Robinson, you're not going to read that whole page.
It'll take a minute.
We're way over the time and we have lost a quorum.
I agree, I'm going to bring this back after I get back--
Why don't you do that another time?
Yeah, I'll bring it back from San Francisco, I have to see Mayor Brown, thank you.
Have a good time, have a nice trip. All right, that closes the public comment period, it closes the meeting. We, we're not here anymore. Excuse me? Well, we'll have an adjourning motion, you, just as long as you know too that we don't have a quorum.
I understand, it's not necessary--
That's okay, go ahead.
I would ask that we adjourn in memory of Gladys Brockman, who passed away on Sunday. She's a constituent of the 12th District and she's survived by her son, Paul Brockman, and his family who live on Nashville Street in Chatsworth.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I request that we adjourn in memory of Victor Cacho, more affectionately known as Butch in the community, who was 23 years old and a resident of Silmar, California. He was born in Panama City in the Northeast Valley and raised there, graduated from Alamanee High School recently in 1996. He was a founder and co-owner of Ultra Greens Nursery, which is one of a number of nurseries owned by the Cacho family in the Northeast Valley. And certainly the family and Butch personally was someone known as, not just in nursery business, but a family dedicated to community service and participation.
I'd like to be a co-sponsor on that, please, okay?
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Also in the 12th District.
Call the roll. And now we're formally adjourned. Have a nice weekend.